Good evening, welcome to the City of New Franklin Council meeting, Wednesday, December 20th, 6 o'clock. And on the agenda tonight, we have three first readings, one second reading, and a third reading. We'll begin with first reading resolution number 23R90.
Ms. Jones start.
I don't have it on my call, so I do not really, I apologize.
We're going to begin with the hearing tonight. Paul, do I need you to tell me what meeting we're going to have first?
Uh, well, no, yeah, it could be the--
The planning?
Yeah, the public hearing.
Proposed amendments.
Uh, well, we can do the public hearing, and then we'll address the amendment as we go through when we get into the committee--
Okay.
--the further committee reports. And--
Will you turn that over to--
Barry Fred.
Barry Fred now?
Yes, I would note, I guess, for the record, that council and the mayor received a recommendation from Planning and Zoning on December 4th of this year for revisions to the articles that are going to be discussed. The zoning code requires a public hearing within 30 days from that date. Here we are. Requires notice of publication two consecutive weeks, and that was accomplished on December 8th and December 15th. At the conclusion of this hearing, consistent with the zoning code, council could proceed to make decisions relative to it, but within 90 days, required either to adopt, deny, or adopt with modifications following this public hearing.
Right.
Want me to turn this on here again?
Good, work on that, and while you're working on that--
Pause just a second.
Yeah, Judy, Mr. Klein is here, and he's on the-- his schedule's a little bit tight.
Okay.
So with your permission, I will ask Mr. Klein to come forward. The council has approved a proclamation in naming a date of the city. This City of New Franklin proclamation now comes to council of the City of New Franklin, hereby makes the following declaration. Whereas Agnes Askunis, a longtime New Franklin resident, soon will be celebrating her 100th birthday on December 30th, 2023. Whereas Agnes married Charles Klein, her first husband, had two children, Ron and Cheryl. Charles and Agnes divorced, and he passed away at age of 36. Agnes married Ed Askunis in 1954. Almost 50 years ago. Wow. And the family moved to New Franklin in 1955. Ed and Agnes were married for 59 years before he passed in 2014. Whereas Agnes was an accountant at Goodyear Aerospace for the Wheel and Brake Division, which is also where she met her husband Ed. During World War II, she was a Rosie the Riveter, wasn't she? She was honored to be chosen to work on the squadron making instrument panels for the military. Eventually, she stayed home to raise her kids, Ron and Cheryl, while Ed continued to work at Goodyear. Whereas Agnes has enjoyed many hobbies and interests over her life. As a talented seamstress, she enjoyed making clothing for herself and her daughter Cheryl. She was part of the Manchester Women's Club and enjoyed modeling in their fashion show. She enjoyed being active for the golfing, bowling, or dancing at the Sloane Center in Garden. In school, she was in choir and on the drill team. She also played the Hawaiian guitar and taught others to play it as well. Whereas Agnes has been blessed with excellent health. She rarely takes any medications. She walks on her own with no assistance. She drove until the age of 98 and passed her eye exam last year with no problem. She currently lives in New Franklin with her son Ron. Now, therefore, in recognition and celebration of a life well lived, the council of the City of New Franklin designates Saturday, December 30th, 2023, as Agnes Askunis Day in the City of New Franklin. It extends best wishes for many years ahead, approved this 20th day of December, 2023, by the City Council of the City of New Franklin, and signed by President Judy Jones. So, yeah, congratulations.
She's just a wonderful lady, and she took care of us, and I'm just so happy that she's doing well, and I'll get back, and she's a avid basketball fan, and the dad's watching the game together.
Okay, good.
She's just such a humble, loving mother in person.
Well, she raised a fine son. She's lucky to have him.
I'm just so grateful to be able to be with her and help her. She never leave up on me, and I don't want to give up on her.
That's what mom's doing.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, God bless you. Please send her best to your mom, and celebrate a little extra on December 30th. That's her day here in the City of New Franklin.
All right, I'll get started now. What we're going to do tonight, I'm going to go through-- I have a PowerPoint. It goes through the package that you received dated November 30th. Basically, what you received was the original code sections and the amended code sections. What I'm going to do tonight is really just briefly go through all of those changes, and then if you have any questions, I can answer those questions for you. I'd like to start first with the process. I think the process went really well with going through the planning commission, and I'm just going to walk through this briefly, is that the first meeting we had to discuss these text amendments that were in the package was September 7th. And at that point, the Planning and Zoning Commission had a workshop. We gave them our first draft of how we think some of the changes should be made. They reviewed it, discussed it, had some changes they wanted us to make. So then on October 19th, we met again with those changes, and we reviewed those changes, and based on the discussion we had at the workshop, there were additional changes that were needed. We then prepared what we call the public hearing drafts that were given to them on November 16th at a public hearing. But prior to that, that same week, we held a meeting with the Board of Zoning Appeals to review those public hearing drafts. The Board of Zoning Appeals had some additional changes. We discussed those changes with the Planning Commission on November 16th, and they were then incorporated into the November 30th draft. That public hearing continued from November 16th to the 30th. And then with all these changes and updates, you then received what the Planning and Zoning Commission approved on the 30th. So I think this process is each step, we fine-tuned what was-- what they felt was appropriate, and what you see tonight are only those changes that we had with BZA input, Planning and Zoning Commission input, and residents input. So I think the process worked pretty good. Almost a two-month process, three months, yeah, a month, but I think it went well. So let's start off. We separated these into four amendment sections. And the first thing was, we, if you recall, in the first days, we moved-- we had a place for non-conformities to add this to Article 3, in which we intended to move Article 7, Non-Conforming Use Regulations, to a better location between Article 3, Chapter 306. And so what we did now was, we made those changes. And what you see in what we call the new chapter, 306, non-conformities, is really the same information that was in Article 7. We had some minor amendments, and I'll go through those, and then we made some formatting changes. So as we're putting these into the new article, there's some minor formatting changes that were made. So those changes, it's hard to tell in this version in red where the changes-- we only made changes to three sections, and they really dealt with-- one was, it still referred to the city as a village, and we changed it to city. And then we made the change effective dates. You can see that the date of this code and revisions to this code shall be regulated. So they made minor changes just to show when changes were made, made to this code. Other than that, it's the same information that was in Article 7. It's just now Chapter 306, 306. The second area amendments is what we made the biggest changes. And they're Article 4, Article 5, and Article 6. And basically, what we did here was, we added attached single-family dwellings to R3 and RL. We eliminated Chapter 400.02, Zoning Act Interpretations and Boundaries, because it now exists in Article 1, in the Phase 1 amendments. We didn't need to repeat it in Article 4. And then there was a minor-- there was a change made to process in the mid-2000s where it had the Planning and Zoning Commission actually approving conditional use permits. Prior to that, it was the Board of Zoning Appeals. The code still said Board of Zoning Appeals, so we changed that. And then in Article 6, we actually described what we were doing with-- what regulations, what standards were for attached single-family. And then we also added a new single-family type within the RL. So right now, RL has attached single-family. It has new single-family existing single-family. And those changes were really recommended through the residents that wanted it that way more than-- than maybe the Planning Commission was looking for different ways of doing this. And I think that was an innovation that came from the public, and we incorporated that into the changes. And so let's go through this. One of the first things you'll see in Article 4, N-VAPs, was taken out. Just established from the zoning districts, because it was established with VAPs in Article 1. In 400.01, Districts and Intents, you can see in the R3, we added attached single-family in the description. And in RL, we added attached single-family. And there are some-- a couple sentences describing, you know, how single-family interpretation of front and rear yard. And we felt it really wasn't needed, and the Planning Commission agreed. And so now we've just simplified it that attached single-family dwellings, single-family and attached single-family, next to or near the 406. It's prior to that, the backyards in the RL were the front yards, and the front yards were the backyards, and it was confusing. And so we just cleared up how we look at those. Every other lot in the city has a backyard and a front yard that are described, except for the RL. So we just simplified it. The next thing in Article 5, Permitted and Conditional Uses. This was real simple. As you see, in 500.01D, Conditional Uses, we took out Board of Zoning Appeals and added Planning and Zoning Commission. It was just a typo, so we had to change the rules. And then in the actual matrix, we added attached single-family, and it's permitted use in R3 and RL, and we put abbreviation in front of this. Single-family dwelling is S-N-C, and attached single-family, they have that. And we just added those four, no clarification. Those are the only changes we made.
Fred?
Yes?
Can you flip back there for one second? I don't know if I'm out of order in sequence of what you're going to present, but you note that there was some discussion about making attached single-family either permitted or conditional in the B1, and based upon the input at the public hearing. It's my understanding that a decision was made to pull that--
Yes.
--reconsider that at some other time. So I think it's important to emphasize that the attached single-family that is being added is only in the R3 and the RL.
Right. Yes, at the last public hearing meeting, it was taken out.
Yeah.
It wasn't that they didn't want attached single-family potentially in the B1. It's felt much wait till we made more changes to that section. Because they eventually will when we get to that section. Let's just wait, and so we took it out completely. Sorry about that. Mentally mentioned. So Article 6 developed, and this is probably where the biggest changes were made. And as you can see, the red is not a lot of changes, but they were important changes. So, and we'll go through the footnotes, and footnote 1 is really right here. In R3, we added attached single-family. And basically, what this says, and this evolved from being complicated to really being more straightforward, and I'll read it, and then I'll explain it in a little detail. Footnote 1 says, "Attached single-family, A-S-F lots, must be in new subdivisions, five acres or greater, and in combination with single-family lots." So basically, you can do an attached single-family lot. It has to be in a new subdivision, over five acres, and it can't be the entire subdivision. It has to be in combination with single-family lots. Overall subdivision densities with A-S-M-A, attached single-family lots, must not exceed eight units per acre. We had different ways we were looking at it than it said that 50% of the lots have-- cannot be more-- you can't have more than 50% of the lots as attached single-family. And it was getting confusing, and so what we decided to do, and I think the Planning Commission hurried it, as you see, is that let's just cap it at density. And so, and we'll go into the numbers now, it's going to be a little more-- so you just can't exceed eight units per acre. If you had a single-family, it would be six units per acre. So it allows you to mix and match. And the final sentence is a really important sentence. It says, "Make sure en grouping of single-family and attached single-family lots will be established during the subdivision application process by the Planning and Zoning Commission." So basically, what it says is, if you want to, you can put attached single-family with an increased density, two more units per acre, and what the Planning Commission has a final saying. Where you put these units, how they're mixed throughout the development. And so I want to go on and go into that column here, or this row here. As you can see, it says new lots, the minimum size lot is 3,500 square feet. And I wanted to go over that number, because if you had 3,500 square feet per lot, it would really be 12 units per acre, but we're capping it at eight units per acre. That is really based on the lot size, and the lot size is based on building type. If you have attached units, it's a typical building lot size with attached units. So then let's get to the next column. Minimum lot width is 28 feet and 38 end units. During the process, as our discussions, I'm going to go to footnote 2, is we start talking about what units would look like. And footnote 2 says, "Attached single-family dwellings with street-facing, front-loaded garages must be at least 32 feet wide for interior lots and 42 foot wide for end lots. Two-guard garages are required." So basically, what we said was that we're going to require any attached single-family unit to have a two-guard garage. We're going to say, if you have a front garage, it has to be at least 32 foot long, not 28 foot wide. And the end units have to be 34 foot long. So what it does is, it allows for units that have more than the garage for its street. Now, if you still wanted to put a back lane and put all the units, which is front doors, then you can still be 28 and 38, but the garages are in the back. If you have a back lane, you would need the garages. So we gave an option of, you want front-loaded garages, it has to be wider. If you want to have a back lane, which caught people going through the garage to the rear unit, it's still going to be 28 and 38. So minimum front load-- front garage depth is 25. That's pretty standard. Minimum rear yard depth is 25 hundred attached units, and minimum side yard is the attached units is zero, because it's attached. An end unit would be 10 feet. The maximum building height is 35 feet. You can see some of these apartments are 40 feet, and even some of the single-family are 40 feet. Some of the others, we felt that 35 was tall enough for structure. So that's-- those are the changes that were in the attached single-family, R3. The next change was the RL. And this came about from discussions with people at the public hearings and at the work sessions, is that they didn't want changes-- that many changes on existing lots, so we listened. So when we go to 3, we have to say-- we have to define what an existing lot is, and we put it actually in the footnote. There's an existing lot is defined as any lot parcel or part of any lot, a parcel, developed or subdivided prior to the effective date of this code amendment. We also put in a definition, we can read it in the definition section. So basically, we're defining any lot, existing lot on a street, an existing street, is an existing lot, whether it's vacant or not. So even if somebody had a big lot and they sub the lot of this after the date of this code, it's still an existing lot. And so the only change we made, we made two changes to this, is we made the minimum lot area 7,000 square feet. And the reason why that was done is that most lots are minimum 7,000 square feet in the RL. There are smaller lots. The RL was said, high density, however, 90% of the lot-- and the way the code is today is they have to be at minimum of a half acre. And so none of them are hardly a half acre. And so we settled on 7,000, because that's pretty standard for most of the lots in that area. And these are minimums anyway. We still have the minimum width as listed at 55. Minimum front yard's 25, as it is today. The minimum rear yard depth is 50 feet, and that's what it is today. The only change we made to that is that if you go to footnote 4, that should be a red. I don't know why I didn't show the red. It says, "Rear ground-level decks averaging two feet from the ground are allowed to extend 10 feet beyond the rear setback. Deck shall be unenclosed, no roofs. Land shall have an opacity of no greater than 40%. Capacity as a solid space, have super sound and upper total surface effects." What we-- if you recall, we started this process was because there were a lot of variances in BZA. And one of those variances were people wanted to add decks to the back of the property, and we defined decks as part of the structure. In most codes, they're not, they're patches. And so we said, the commission, what if you allow a deck to extend 10 feet into that rear yard? So if the building was at 50 feet, you can put a ground-level deck 10 feet into that rear yard. And everybody seemed to be okay with that, it was, you didn't want to block anybody's view. If you could put a patio back there, that could be built up probably a foot if you're doing it. So if you could put all these things on patio, you just couldn't put a deck back there. So we just said, okay, you're going to send a deck 10 feet. So that's why footnote 4 is. And then through the discussions, this changed back and forth. We had a 15-foot side yard depth, and we talked about the BZA and the Planning Commission. Everybody felt that the 10-foot was adequate for the side, you know, in some sense. It's common in the other ones in the R3, and so we decided that-- the side yard, so if you're going to allow somebody to stand and don't let them go in the rear yard, maybe you can let them go five feet wider than the side entrance. So that's why it went from 15 and decided to 10 feet. And that was a change that we made after the comments. Like I said, it went back and forth. It was the final meeting that we decided to go with 10 feet.
May I ask for a little clarification? Should the front of the backyard, so we've always-- correct me if I'm wrong, because I hear a lot of people-- front yard is the length side in RL, and that has not changed?
It has changed. It's called a rear yard.
Okay.
But the regulations-- it's just-- it's said, it's said called, frankly, we're calling it rear yard, and these are the requirements for the rear yard.
Okay. And that's specific to the--
Right, yes.
Okay.
And it's specific to every-- every district, every single-family here, and three-family, they're all front and back. The front is facing the street, and back is the rear yard. And so all we did in this case was, the rules hadn't changed on the setbacks. We'll just call it the rear yard, just to be consistent. And I think the way we did this-- Barry might have to correct me if I'm wrong-- is that you really can't build anything long in a backyard, other than a deck, 50 feet. Not a gazebo, not a covered porch. All you can do is put a two-foot. So I think that we strengthened those regulations.
Right. If you want to build a gazebo or something, you need a variance.
Yeah, you still--
It's just we get the variance, yeah.
There's still that path for you, but--
There's always, there's always that.
Always a path, yeah. And I think going through this, and we went through these, actually, but I think, you know, we're not going to eliminate all the variances that come into the zoning appeals. But we're trying to eliminate some of them. Side yards, rear yards, with the deck. And so I think it was, you know, both the BZA and the commission, the NBA, felt that they're okay with that, that there's still going to be some variances. The issue was, everything that seemed like was getting built in the RL was needing the variance. And so we tried to eliminate some of those. That's reasonable.
It did say in our code, now if you read, said you could build a 4x4x4 box would be permitted, which is basically, you could put a doghouse.
Where you could put a dog alley, you could put a thing for your cushions for your bone or--
Right, right. It's kind of a strange thing we had in the 4x4s.
We're going to get into that next phase.
Call it a dock locker. A dock locker.
We couldn't figure out exactly what it was for, and everybody--
That's what it was for.
That was-- we thought it was like a pump house or something, but it wasn't. All right, so let's go on now. So the next one, we added a new single-family. I'm sorry, we did-- this idea, why are you going? Is a new single-family lot. And I'll define that. Footnote 5 says, "A new lot is defined as any new subdivision lot, a parcel created after the effective date of this code amendment." So any new development, any new lot created in a subdivision could fall under BZA. These are just minimums now, just what, you know, all-- we're all dealing with minimums, things could be bigger than this. And again, it's-- whoops, here's my arrow. 7,000 square feet, 55 feet wide, minimum front yard's 25. And the new one is the minimum yard is 35. And going through the process, it wasn't so much that the 50 was this number that everybody wanted. It was 50 when everybody else is already built out. So in the new developments, everybody felt that you could go to 35, like I said, because it all would be 35, fixing to live. because it all would be thirty-five, fixing the limit. It's not like having something already existing, and you're building a new lot, and you're going to have thirty-five, and the people beside you are fifty.
So how are you going to define what's a new development? So if I've got, say I buy two houses, got a significant lot, and I just wanted to gather the minimum, only seven thousand square feet, which is about an acre to an acre, if I'm right. I buy two lots between a bunch of other houses, and I divide, divide, I decide to divide them, is that not a new development, and couldn't that not be thirty-five feet? That'd be an existing lot.
It would be an existing lot, but if you had five acres, four acres, like that, you couldn't, couldn't do attached single-family. But you could do single-family, and by this requirement, it could be thirty-five.
That's, that's, that's a concern for me. I get, I get a new development, if you've got, if you've got ten acres, or even five acres, to be honest with you, that's, that's not a big deal, because we know there's not that much ground.
Let me look at this, because you've got this lot, I have to do. It says, a lot is defined as any new subdivision lot or parcel created. So I, so basically, there's two types of subdivisions, a minor subdivision and a major subdivision.
Let me jump in, if I can.
No, no.
Well, you're talking, okay, so, there's, you've got two lots, there's a house on inch one. They're tearing those houses down, and they're going to build now, okay? Those lots are existing lots, under footnote three. An existing lot is defined as any lot, parcel or part of any lot or parcel developed or subdivided prior to the effective date. So now you're, now you're dealing with an existing lot, and as an existing lot, you have the fifty-foot minimum rear, rear. So there's no...
That was discussed intentionally, yep. My question then is, that could not be then subdivided down into smaller parcels and considered a new development? That's, that's...
Yes, and that got me thinking, by the way, we probably, we talked about this. We also have a definition for existing lots. We'll go through that.
Okay.
It's variance, right.
I just want to make sure there's some way that this is...
If there's an existing street, there, it could be existing street, it's utilities, whatever, it's an existing lot.
Okay, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, and I want to be clear on these kind of things, these are the kind of things that came up. This was, as you went through this and presented it, planning and zoning, that was a concern that, that we became aware of, that planning and zoning had, and what's going to happen in those situations. And so, in my understanding, is then the additional, you know, the footnotes and the definitions were added. And I just want to continue to be careful, clear, and make that, this stuff, you know, this came, this comes from planning and zoning, all right? This is not from the administration or the mayor saying, here's how we ought to do this. And I think, I just want everybody to be comfortable with that, okay? But I'm aware of it, because I was involved in the discussion, to that extent.
Yeah, and we had these discussions, that's what we had, four or five meetings, and we talked about those things. And that was, we wanted to protect the property that already exists.
People had that very concerned about.
I just want to make sure when we got to the end here, that there is some way of defining, and that's a perfect way to do it, you know? As long as there's a definition of what a new lot and what an old lot is, then you can't figure out a way to make an old lot a new lot. Then we're okay.
Sorry, Barry.
No, that's okay. Thank you for that.
Just confused me for a second. Did I make a point? Thank you, Mayor, for clearing that up. All right, so that, that is, again, thirty-five rear, you can put a deck in the new subdivision, ten feet, go to ten feet. Your minimum side yards are ten feet, and the height is thirty-five feet. And then, we added the attached single-family, and the attached single-family are exactly the same as we described, and it just refers back to footnote one. And then, thirty-five hundred square feet is a new lot, and twenty-eight and thirty-eight refers back to, is eight, refers back to footnote two. So the attached single-family are the same as the RL, the RL three, as the RL. The only change in this is, there was some wording that was in the old table that was hard to explain everything in, but we just simplified it and just said, in addition to these matrix standards, other specific code requirements are described in separate articles in this code. So basically, there are other things you still have to follow. You're building a house, you still have to have, you know, potential landscaping, you still have to have other requirements that's not essentially in this matrix, but there are other things you have to follow. So those are the changes we made, and like I said, these are probably the biggest changes we made in all the variances. I'll go on now. The next one is, chapter eleven hundred, on the repairing, helping setback regulations. Basically, we started doing this as, there were some things that staff felt should be changed with the repairing. These repairing regulations were written by some of the oil and water conservation district. They're basically, not that they're bad, they're basically township regulations, because they work with the county, and they develop these regulations for unincorporated areas in the county. And so, and they even said so, maybe if we don't... And so, there are some things that needed to be changed, not a lot of things. The repairing regulations are pretty good, they developed. And there are some things that staff wanted, and some of those things that, instead of having to go to the rezoning appeals every time there was a slight encroachment into a repair, then it was thought that it was better to have either administrative approvals, and cases where it was a subdivision, have the planning and zoning commission approve a modification, instead of having to go to both the rezoning appeals and the planning and zoning commission. And so, that, those are the changes we really made. And then, all of the intrusions still go to the rezoning appeals, the variances and the fields. And we didn't make a lot of changes here, but as we went through these things, we did have some discussion about how to simplify some of the regulations. So, as we started, we, we actually made it complicated, some of them, as we went through it, and we looked back to the version five version. The first thing was, under section E of that permitted uses of repairing and setbacks, no permit required, we added a five to this. It's an installation of underground or above-ground utility lines with approval of city engineer, zoning administrator, and some soil or conservation district. And this was actually a recent rezoning appeals, where PPG had to run an underground land in areas that they all had already. And it was just a, run this line, and cut over it, follow the regulations, but they needed variance. And so, talking to some of the soil and water conservation district and various areas earlier, it's just, if you're doing something that's not really changing the behavior, it could be a requirement to approve. So we gave it an administrative approval, which is a rezoning appeals variance. The next thing we did was, we just changed the wording, so if there was a boundary interpretation appeals, we just made that decision of the rezoning appeals would not be a variance, the applicant would appeal that decision, rather than a variance. So it's just wording that happened. The next one was, we added that any modifications to a subdivision, if there were encroachments in a subdivision flat, the planning commission, planning and zoning commission would approve those modifications. And then, we just changed the review criteria, since we separated things into administrative, rezoning appeals, and planning commission, we took the review process and made it its own section, instead of being part of either section. And then finally, we had a whole list of species and shrubs and vines that are recommended in stabilizing flood prone areas. Some soil basically said, take that out, because those, those type of shrubs and vines change periodically, if you have them in the code, you might be putting something that you don't want anymore. And so, it'd be better just to have a list that the city has, that could be updated. And so, we took that out, and we just put the city will retain a list of recommended shrubs and vines in flood prone areas and streams. So those, those are the changes we made in the repairing. And then finally, because of the changes we made in articles four, five, and six, we had to add some definitions to the revised regulations and regulations. And so, the first thing was building height. We got into discussion at the rezoning appeals meeting, and at the final public hearing about building height. And so, the definition basically had that if you have a pitched roof, the height of the building was based on the top of the pitch. And typically, it's usually the average height between the pitch. So if you have a seven-twelve pitch or a four-twelve pitch, you take the middle of that for your height. And most codes are like that, and for some reason, a lot of them wasn't. And so, the only change we made was the average height, the original gave a bit of that. So then, when you see a thirty-five, it's based on the, on the building age. So that was the only change we made that, but we did that change, add the recommendation of BZA. We added dwelling attached single-family, this is an important thing too, is that we had to define what attached single-family is. So we defined it as a structure design for not more than three single-family units that are vertically attached via a common or a joint wall, where each unit has its own end port from the outside, and where the individual unit probably holds a feces of the toilet to a legal line that includes attached units. So basically, what we're saying is that you can only attach three units of the attached single-family, not more, it can't be four, it can't be five, it has to be three. And each of them has to be on a feces of a lot. So, so basically, the individual unit. Finally, this gets to, we had a discussion earlier, when we had to define what miller, and we ended up putting, this is a standard definition, and then we looked up different definitions, and this is a law dictionary, actually. A parcel prepared for construction of buildings and approved with installed gas lines, water lines, electric lines, telephone, cable lines, groundwater management system, sanitary line extensions, and roadways. So if any of those are in there, if your lot is on a road, it's a lot developed. If it just has electric lines already there, it's developed. So that's how we're defining developed cars.
Shouldn't we say four, since when? When I read that, I thought it has to have every single one of those.
We can put a lot, you know, if that changes, maybe it should...
That's exactly how I originally thought, you know, the attached people, you know, that was...
If that's more clear, we can put a lot. So those are the changes that we made. I think we made good progress through the process with the planning commission, planning and zoning commission, and the rezoning appeals, and so this is our... And was that bad? I can try to answer any questions.
Did have a quick question for you. You know, let's say there's a fairly large-sized development that's being proposed, what considerations were given for traffic and traffic control and...
That's really a subdivision issue. When we go through the subdivision process, that's a question of the planning commission. Even if you look in their criteria that we changed in article two, they can ask for transportation, they can ask for traffic planning, they can ask for store motor, better store motor management plans. So those, this is just zoning, whether you're allowed to do it. But those things are in there, and then when we re, finally redo the subdivision code, hopefully soon, we'll specify that, and then we'll do so.
Right, because for a large, a large development, I don't know, this is potentially a hundred, it's going to be a...
No. And so, you have to, and typically with new subdivisions, it's almost a common thing anymore, that developers have to give a traffic management plan.
Okay.
So, yeah, so it's in the code now, and it will be expanded when we finish the code.
I got you. One more question than I had was, was just on the flood planes. So, because the, the port lakes is considered a flood plane etiquette to the zone, hey, is what the, what consideration was given for this type of development for already flood planes?
Okay. So, the flood planes are flood planes, and you're not going to be able to do them. We have in the repairing, certain things you can do in a repairing area, which are normal flood planes. You can't usually build any, any building, and they're actually in the repairing, where it's required.
So in, in currently, any designated flood zone areas has to say that?
Now, there are some things in the repairing, like there's a house already there, you can do a line of expansion, things like that, that you need variance, in most cases.
So if a lot that's currently in a, you know, a flood plain or a flood area that currently doesn't have a C law, and there was a decision to, you know, raise that grade up, you know, that pushes the flood zone elsewhere, I guess, so is that...
Again, we're just dealing with setbacks now, and things like that. Those issues are other building type issues, repairing issues, there are flood plain issues, there's groundwater management issues, those are in the development process. So this is just, yes, this is, but I always tell people is that, this is the first checklist. Do I need setbacks? Do I do, you know, is the lot big enough? Get through that, and say, okay, now, preliminarily, I can develop this lot. Now the real things come into play, is that, you know, in my under-repairing, all those things you have to meet. So the checklist is maybe a hundred things, items long, we're in the first five or six items at this point, if you qualify.
All right.
This is a public hearing, so it is open for comments, so if anybody in the audience has any questions or comments about what was presented today, now's the time to share that, your comments and concerns with us.
And council will be taking our time on this, so you're still going to, if you don't think of something tonight, you want to bring another topic to council the next meeting, feel free, because we're not, we're not passing this time. Won't be long, but not...
We'll change that end to four, too.
Yeah, I think that definitely is a key one.
Yeah, it's quite a movement. I don't know if all of the work, probably any of these or some of these, something like that, yeah.
I think we understand the goal.
I saw the same thing, yeah.
The goal really is to not, not have somebody be able to, you know, I mean, there's, you see how much it's changed in twenty years. Twenty years from now, somebody, there might be the financial incentive for somebody to buy a five house.
Right.
And, and say, well, now this is a subdivision, you know? I...
Still, still a few...
That, that protection is...
Hey, Barry, is Jones, you back on?
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Merry Christmas.
Thank you.
Merry Christmas.
Keep your head in check, everybody.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Okay, so now, we have your regular council meeting, Wednesday, December twelfth. The first reading is resolution number twenty-eight bar ninety-nine. Does it count?
So this resolution is assigned to the utilities committee. I would like to open this meeting at six fifty. This is a resolution in support of the Ohio GIC LLC application, the Ohio Residential Board broadband expansion grant for funding for extension of broadband to the New Franklin residents and declaring an emergency...
Thank you guys very much.
Okay, so now we're ready to go to the council meeting. December 20th. The first reading is Resolution Number 20KAR99. Does it count?
So this resolution is assigned to the Utilities Committee. I would like to open this meeting at 6:50. This is a resolution in support of the Ohio Gig LLC application, the Ohio Residential Board broadband expansion grant for funding for extension of broadband to the New Franklin residents and declaring an emergency. So I think we've got somebody here from Summit County?
Yes, we do. Yeah, this is, well, we'll speak to it. This is a beautiful opportunity for New Franklin with no economic impact whatsoever. We struggled with, we identified, it was like the magic 48, but we identified a number of homes that had no internet access, particularly that came to our attention during COVID. And then we reached out to some providers to see what it would take to get that internet access to these unserved areas. And it was hundreds of thousands of dollars. And so you're aware of the five, well, actually, I won't give the whole conversation, I'll let them tell. But we have an opportunity here to find a way to, to support the grant application that will make that possible. So with us tonight is Holly Miller. Holly is the Deputy Director of the Department of Community and Economic Development for Summit County. And she has with her Nick Hunter. And Nick is the CEO, owner, I guess even, of Ohio Gig. So if you guys would like to come forward, please, and talk a little bit about what, what this grant will, what, what will happen for New Franklans.
Microphone's there, if you can use the microphone, that way the video picks you up.
We're going to karaoke. Brass. Alright, yes. Alright, so Holly Miller, with the Department of Community and Economic Development, you and I wanted to talk about programs. I think I was here earlier this year, so I started my year with you, I made my year with you, I feel good. So like I said, Nick Howie and I, and I think I spoke about it the last time I was out here, we have, the county executives have made a commitment with our ARPA dollars to build 125 mile, middle mile fiber ring to connect all 31 communities as a public safety point. So each one of our communities will have fiber run to the facility and we're choosing, I believe here it might be the fire department or this building here. And then after that, we realized we need to make sure that all of the residents have affordable, reliable, high-speed internet. So they're indicated during COVID, that's when we really hit home, that there are people that cannot afford internet, do not have internet, do not have devices. Students are going to school, they're having internet at home, they're at school, but they're coming home and they, they're coming with their crumb book and it just becomes a big gigantic paperweight because they can't do anything with it. So we had people sitting in the thonnesque parking lots and the library parking lots trying to get free Wi-Fi. We know that it's almost impossible to get the current providers that we have in Summit County to give that affordable internet to our residents. We all know who the main providers are. So the county has had conversations with many smaller internet service providers over the last two, two and a half years, if not longer at this point in time now. And we are currently in negotiations with Ohio Gig. This is the first time he has been anywhere with us publicly, so we're a little nervous to actually kind of say their name. But what, the reason why we're bringing him and his company to the table now in your community is because while we tout and say we're going to have digital equity for all residents in Summit County, you have those magic 40 to 50 that have no internet. So I know I don't feel comfortable saying digital equity for everybody when I'm aware that there are 50 residents here that don't have anything other than a hotspot on their phone. So there is a grant opportunity through a program called Orbe, through this state of Ohio, that only an internet service provider can apply for. So the county's not an internet service provider, but Ohio Gig is. So we have asked Ohio Gig to apply for those funds to attempt to service those residents. This is still not a tomorrow they can have service, next week they can have service. They have to apply, they have to be awarded, we have to design the project, we have to be able to light them up. I'm going to talk with Nick and his team if there's some sort of a Band-Aid, for lack of a better word, that we can get these individual services, even if it's an LTE over the air service, until we get a middle mile done and then a final mile to their residences using potentially the Orbe grant if we get it. If they don't receive the Orbe grant, there's additional funding through the state of Ohio called the BE grant that portal just opened. So we may be returning back to you for additional letters of support or resolutions to apply for that. I, I really don't know, I cannot give you a, a infinite, this is going to happen in six months, this is going to happen in a year, but I just want to relay to you, the county is aware of these residents, we're going to get serviced to these residents. It's first and foremost to us. It does not need to be the entire, entire middle mile built. It is very important that everybody has affordable, reliable internet. With that, I'm going to have Nick talk very briefly about Ohio Gig. If the grants are awarded, we will have him and his crowd here a lot more talking to you and your residents and how we can make this partnership work. Thank you.
And thank you, Holly. Appreciate everybody's time and, and thanks for letting me stop by. Like she said, we've been working with the, the county of Summit on a potential solution for not only the mid-mile project, but also for serving areas like New Franklin. I think it's important that you all understand who we are. We purposely stayed under the radar given who we are. Our family, my family, specifically the Hunter family, has been in Ohio since before the state was formed. We must call it a land grant farm down in Cincinnati, Ohio. We run manufacturing companies, have over 3,600 employees. I've always had a dream of bringing high-quality manufacturing jobs back to our classically viable part of the state. Couldn't do it three years ago because the broadband infrastructure was so poor, you couldn't build a modern manufacturing facility. And when going to the incumbent providers that she mentioned, we were told that no help is coming and, and you're, and you're either going to pay us millions of dollars for antiquated technology, or you're not going to have internet. And so we asked ourselves the question, can we be an internet provider? We were not getting the help when we were asked, but we know we're operators of businesses. And so we did maybe come up with a plan to do that. As a 200-year-old family in the state, we said, if we're going to do internet in our own community, we are not going to do some dick and can solution. We're going to build the best internet we can. We're going to do it, do it one time, we're going to do it right. And the way we came up with was a business model that focuses on building local owned and operated businesses. We want to build a Summit County gig, a Logan County gig, a, a, a Clutton County gig. And those, that idea sprung from our first company we built called Little Line and Gig down in Cincinnati area. It was four guys in a shovel and one customer made a point. And today, we're in five counties, about to be in nine counties, and we have over 200, excuse me, 200 employees and are one of the largest fiber builders in the whole state of Ohio. This was done with our family money and with outside private investors. And what we do is we go into every community and your community as well, is that we actually control the entire function. We raise our own construction crews, we go and partner with vocational schools, we do paid apprenticeship programs. So your kids that go to those schools, get their degrees in heavy equipment, come out with full-time jobs building internet in your own community. This is, this is about a system that has failed a lot of these over, under dense populated areas like New Franklin or like our family home in Lancaster or Ohio, is they are not designed to build in low-density markets like the area. They are designed to build in the menor, menor oil, Anaffron, but that leaves all of these other areas completely behind the times. And so we, by building our own crews, doing everything ourselves, we can control that and do it for each community, one county at a time. That's been our model. We've stayed very under the radar because it's a very competitive space. But we also have really excelled in building businesses for the community. We actually have people from the community that invest in that company, so they can also, you know, be part of that business. And so our model here would be not only to help with potential mid-mile builds, but then bring a solution potentially through Orbe grant as, as, call it subsidy. But we have always focused on, you have to be able to build this stuff with private capital only. The reason why grants are there is because they help subsidize inefficient build models. And we have pushed it to an efficient model that allows us to look at New Franklans and Greens and say, hey, can we build a business that builds permanent infrastructure, community critical infrastructure for your area and do it without, you know, subsidized money? Now, if there is money like Orbe do, and we know that we can potentially come and, you know, apply for it in New Franklin, then we would do that, but it would be the intent of not only doing your 50 homes that need help on a Band-Aid basis, but to build underground fiber optic internet to every house in this area. So it's part of a larger private, hey, let's build an area that serves down here, but it would be potentially, excuse me, something that we would then add on and say, hey, if there's a grant we can go apply for, you know, we can obviously make that part of what our approach is here in New Franklin. So ultimately, that is why we're here and we appreciate your guys' consideration and excited to work with Holly. I've known her for almost three years now. We've been in quiet conversations, but really picked it up in the last four or five months. Thank you.
I want to add, based on previous discussion that we had, that, so for these unserved homes, we're not talking just about getting the, the line to the, to the street. As part of this grant and as part of the process, my understanding is you cover 450 feet into the house as well. So that, that expense is covered as well.
Yeah, so we don't, you know, we were very frustrated with large providers, especially in our area of our farm. You've got drops to the, from the mailbox to the side of your house that are quarter mile. And the quotes we were getting were 20, 30, 40,000 dollars just to get one line of antiquated internet to a farm and found that to be wholly unacceptable for a community that just wants something better and deserves better. And so we put at least 450 as absolutely no charge to customers. And anything beyond that, depending on what the contract is signed, and by the way, these are fixed rate contracts, we're not going to send you $7 increments of increased rates to your internet at a surprise every six months, is after that 450 foot, it, it can be as low as 50 cents to a dollar foot to get it to the side of your house. And so what we, part of our community commitment is to at least make a large chunk of that drop for most residents would cover them, that there would be no cost whatsoever for us to go underground through your yard and inside your house.
And the other thing I want to note, as I understand Summit County's commitment for this is hopefully the grant comes, but with grant or no grant, the intention of Summit County is to make this happen for these unserved, and this is without cost to the city of New Franklin.
And we, and we frankly wouldn't be here if we didn't, if, there is no business case, even for a business like mine, that just served 50 homes. It is New Franklin and Green are the exact kind of areas that we live in down in southwest Ohio, where there's large swaths of these areas that have antiquated internet. It weren't happening, and that's us. And so there is a private business case to build a local community-based company, bringing you the best internet in the world that you're never going to have to change again, and we're going to do it right, do it once. So we wouldn't even be in conversations about it just to help 50 homes. Those 50 homes are just part and parcel to a much larger vision of what we have for this area.
I've got a couple of questions here. Basically, this is going to kind of go over how the, the system works and everything. I work for a community north of here, recreate, started our own ISP.
Yep.
Did kind of same thing you guys are doing. It sounds, if you guys are building off the county's ring, which I'm somewhat familiar with, it's all underground, is that correct?
Yes.
So is all your infrastructure underground?
All of it.
Why wouldn't you go on the poles where you can actually, the, the infrastructure cost is pennies to the dollar compared underground?
So, so that's for the general understanding of the knowledge, right, of the industry. Everybody else goes pole because it's perceived as being cheaper. Why? Because if I go out and hire a contractor to do my drilling and my plowing, they're going to baseline charge me 12 to 15 bucks a foot. By doing our own construction crews and having vertical integration throughout our, we do our own engineering, our own field engineering, we actually produce our own conduit, we produce our own splice cases, we have our own construction crews. And that vertical integration actually drives our costs equal to or below aerial fiber. The other thing to consider with aerial fiber is it's the cheap way out for people who don't want to pay contractors to do it underground because it's too expensive. That's why they go on poles. The other thing with poles is maintenance and repairs and maintenance is multiple times higher. If it's up on poles, you have to be concerned with rain, windstorms, snow, ice load, animals chewing into the fiber. Whereas if I put it 40 inches underground in your utility right away, it's generally speaking, I'm never coming back. And so from a cost of both of building a business and then maintaining it, it is more economical to build it underground today and then have much lower repairs and maintenance costs and a crew to constantly drive around in bucket trucks trying to fix everything. But I'll give you a perfect example, I see the tornado shelter thing up here. In Cincinnati, Ohio, two years ago, our network in our area was hit by a tornado. We were the only internet that survived and had no outages because it's underground. So the industry focuses pole, and then on only that, you have to rent those poles. To rent those poles and the last thing that's going on in the industry is what's called make ready, right? Make ready is if you're the last guy on pole and that pole is degraded and old, you have to replace it. And a lot of times, you're replacing 50 poles. And that can then shoot that cost up higher than it is to just put it underground. So from our perspective, giving our underground vertical integration model, it, it is absolutely the best way to do it is to put it underground.
And yeah, that probably plays well to, since you guys are a private company, you have your, we, we have our poles, but we, we have a lot of stuff arrayed, so that was really.
Yeah, and that makes complete sense.
With you guys being based in southwest New Ohio.
Yeah.
I'm assuming you guys have started an office up here. And I'm just looking at the customer service end of it. People are having problems, if there's somebody they can get a hold of, then it's not going to be long.
So the, the, one of the worst rated consumer services in the entire country is internet. People hate their internet. They hate calling people and going overseas. They don't ever have, they have to tell the story 10 times. For us, because we're, our own crews are hired locally, you're one cell phone call away from somebody being at your house. We treat every residential customer as if it's a commercial level SLA or service level agreement. And that you will not go down longer than a couple hours because we have that local crew and a local support already in your town. They're, we're not calling a contractor that's to make a trip from Indiana because they're fixing something in Indiana. They are, they're in your community, they're people who are your community members that are full-time employees in this business around here. And the last thing I'll say is our network operations center is in downtown Columbus. So if there's a broader problem or more complicated customer service issue, it's being routed to downtown Columbus. And so we have the local support here to fix things in your house or on the local network. But if it gets escalated, it's not getting escalated overseas, it's getting escalated right to the Columbus.
I'm assuming the, the last mile to the home will be glass?
All of it, to the side of your house.
And then what, what's your minimum offering for a service?
From a speed perspective?
Yes, is it a gig or?
So it goes all the way down to 300 by 300. But we can serve 100 gig tomorrow if you so chose to pay that. Obviously, there's no consumer products that can handle that kind of speed and there won't be for many.
Right, but your, your base service is 300 then?
300 all the way into the multiple gigs if you so chose.
And you have a price, price rating?
So, no. So all of this is, what the questions you're asking are all the same concerns that the executive has, the executive's seen, which is why we've been in negotiations with Nick now for almost three years. Because we want to make sure that it is fixed price, fixed pricing, that there are different levels of service so that those that are elderly or low income, and if ACP is still around, there might not be any cost for them for the internet, there will be no promotional pricing, and that they will have offices, and not just one, but local offices all throughout Summit County. Because this is for all, eventually, all 31 communities and all residents will have the option to choose them as an internet service provider if we go for it.
That was going to be one of my questions. So, you know, we, we started ours to address the businesses. And that was one of the things we heard a lot of, is the businesses that could have that connectivity. And we did it as a, an effort to retain business.
Sure.
We've since started going it up to the residents.
Yep.
And we're, we're currently partnering with another company, sounds similar to yours, where they're going to build out, you know, to all the residents.
This is commercial and residential?
Yours.
Yes.
Yeah, so and so.
Yeah.
So yeah, so it sounds like you guys are on that same kind of vein. So what I'm hearing is this potentially can be built out to all the residents in New Franklin?
It, our business model has always been residential first.
Okay.
Everybody else is business first. Why? Because even though somebody pays a thousand bucks a month, it's an easier thing to do. We did it with residential first, because by the way, there's no businesses in Lancaster or Ohio, which is, it's much smaller than New Franklin. And so we had to do residential first and to make sure the model worked that way. And we take that for, obviously, if we pass businesses, that's a no-brainer, but ours is actually a residential first approach.
And how much is the grant worth that we're applying for?
The total bucket is $77 million that can be applied for. And so, you know, from our perspective, that's what we're still working on, what we need.
This grant is beginning right this, we have a grant just, the portal just opened, because there's going to be a lot of opportunities where we may be coming back to you. You know, our, our thing to go back to you is it will be available to all residents once negotiations are done, all residents here and in the other 31 communities. All as an opt-in because again, it's just an offer. So, and I think when I was here last time, we talked about how we started Summit Connects as part of our website, you go to Summit Connects. All of this information, as we move forward with Ohio Gig and figuring out how we're going to partner, will all be on Summit Connects. That's where you're going to drive all of your residents to, to get information. Starting in January, we can start to contest the FCC maps. Because if you look at an FCC map, the FCC says everybody has great internet, it's all great, everything's. So, and I think when I was here last time, we talked about how we started Summit Connects as part of our website, you go to Summit Connects. All of this information, as we move forward with Ohio Gig, um, and figuring out how we're going to partner, will all be on Summit Connect. That's where you're going to drive all of your residents to, to get information. Starting in January, we can start to contest the FCC maps. Because if you look at an FCC map, the FCC says everybody has great internet, it's all great, everything's good, have a good day, because Elon Musk has Starlink. So we all know that that's a lot, because you have residents here that don't have service. So what we've done is we've, um, partnered with a company called OOKLA, O-O-O-K-L-A, that does speed tests. In January, we're going to be driving residents to Summit Connects so that they can do a speed test on our website. It takes them to OOKLA, but on the Summit Connects website, it'll be a speed test, it'll also be a short survey they can fill out so we can find out from them, who's your current internet service provider? Are you on an affordable connectivity program? If not, do you want information on it? Um, and how, what do you pay for internet, and what do you feel is affordable for internet? Uh, when you talk about speeds, at least the residents I talk to, they have no idea what the upload and download speed is. What they want to know is, can I watch Netflix? Can my son play Xbox? And can my husband go to the, to the garage and watch football? And can we all do it at the same time? So we can ask questions on the data that they understand, because we want that information so we can share that as we continue our negotiations with Ohio Gig and that we can find those FCC maps, that not everybody has great internet coverage just because Elon Musk has Starlink. Um, so we'll be, we're going to point back to you for a lot of help with your residents to get this information out, need information back from them too, so that we make sure that we're negotiating what your residents want.
All right, I think my last question is, so if I hear you guys are an ISP, but will we be the ISP up here, or is this going to run off of Fairland gig?
No, we will have, we will have another ISP.
So we'll have, so this will be your own ISP standalone?
Correct.
Okay.
We, Katie and I, today we're working on a post, uh, and a website for exactly that survey that you talked about.
Oh, okay.
So we're, uh, we'll be out in front of that and, uh, and have the connection. We have to, we, we apply as, I guess administrators, and then that will open the portal, we'll be able to publicize the portal to the residents and ask you to, uh, ask them to determine what your speed is.
And I would just add, I mean, if Fairland is the place to talk about it, I would congratulate you guys on yourself.
Yeah, I'm a part of Fairland.
You're a sucker.
Yeah, keep it up.
But, but, but Fairland's a great model. The problem is, is not everybody can be like Fairland and build their own municipality and operate an ISP. And, and, you know, ultimately, there has to be different solutions for all kinds of communities, and not everybody can do that or execute on it. Marty Stack did a wonderful job with his team, and we've been in contact with him for years, and just fun to watch his success and our success.
I'll say nobody can be like Kevin either, so, or not everybody can be like Kevin.
Anybody else have any questions?
I, I, I do. So you mentioned two grants, ORBEG, O-R-B-E-G. E-G, and that's in Ohio.
That was from Houseville too, passed in twenty twenty-one.
Okay, thank you. And then, uh, you said B grant?
B-A-D.
That's federal funding and some of those being allocated to the state of Ohio.
So anything you would like to come through broadband Ohio? And, and, you know, if you ever, of late night, you can't sleep, if you go to broadband Ohio, they have stuff on there that you can share with your residents on what channel Ohio is doing, broadband, likely inclusion, and this is a place to drive your residents to if they have questions. It's wonderful, it sounds terrific to me.
Anyone have any questions on this, or you guys okay wave number three?
I'd say so. Sounds like a great room.
I will close the utilities committee at, uh, seven fourteen.
Thank you, Ben.
All right, Nick, thank you for coming.
Thank you so much, Dr. Holliday. Merry Christmas. Nick, thank you for coming.
Yeah.
Resolution number twenty-three R one hundred, Mr. Potts.
Thank you. We will open a finance committee at seven thirteen. Uh, resolution twenty-three R one hundred, a resolution authorizing New Franklin to renew the agreement with Axon Enterprises for body camera recording and storage equipment for the New Franklin Police Department, declaring this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage. Uh, you know, Axon is, uh, probably the number one company for this type of service, and we've been using them. Um, and by signing this contract, we're going to save a whole bunch of money. Uh, Mr. Axon, did you have, uh, any extra information?
Yeah, so what you said, it's, uh, we, our, our five-year, the initial five-year contract is expiring in March. Uh, pursuant to that contract, and, and it'll go forward with this agreement, every two and a half years, they replace all the cameras, uh, there's all the updates that are included in that. Um, and, uh, since the, the anticipation, the reality is that come March, uh, we get into twenty twenty-four, the prices are going up. So if we renew now, we're going to save close to ten thousand dollars over the life of the contract. Um, uh, we would stay on our, uh, on the same, uh, schedule of invoices, so we won't be invoiced until April of twenty twenty-four. Uh, and, uh, there's, we also have a grant application that's pending for sixty thousand dollars, uh, to try to cover this cost, but, uh, we need these anyway. Uh, we are hooked up with, uh, it also includes the, uh, the, the hardware and the software, um, the, uh, storage, the cloud storage through evidence.com. And, uh, evidence.com is used to store all of our video evidence, photo evidence, upload documents, et cetera. Summit County prosecutor, Barbara prosecutor, also use this system, and makes it easy for us to share then, uh, our information with those two offices which do prosecution cases that arrive out here in New Franklin. So, uh, so it was presented to me with the urgency that we would need the approval this year to lock these rates in. And we're going to need this five-year contract regardless.
Questions, comments? Permission wave three? All right. Uh, then moving on to second reading, or third reading, or fourth reading, uh, resolution twenty-three R ninety-two, a resolution for any wage increases for certain full-time and part-time non-union job applications declared in emergency. Mr. Powell?
Oh, we didn't take a seat on that, I apologize.
Well, unless you want to, we have the conversation this year, I've had this one at the beginning.
Okay.
Um, yeah, so this is the third reading, I think we've taken some time. We haven't really had, we've had, we've had some discussion about it. Um, are we comfortable passing this tonight? We can, we can keep going, but we're at the three, so I'd like you to.
I, I don't see any reason to not pass or not to take a vote on it tonight. Uh, I will say, um, as I have every year, that this has come up. Uh, I do not agree with this, I do not agree with the blanket raises. I believe that each non-contracted employee should have a, uh, a review, uh, where wage increases, we consider during that review process, the individual has goals to achieve throughout the year, meaningful goals. Uh, to say that everybody's doing a great job is really just a perception without having actual goals of what they should be doing and achieving is, is, is a, uh, a perception that they're doing a good job. Uh, we have within this, uh, uh, resolution, an increase for, um, an increase for our communication manager, uh, which is going from twenty-six, uh, dollars ninety-three cents per hour to thirty dollars, uh, per hour. And, um, I, I think we're all comfortable saying that our communication manager just does a, a bang-up job. Uh, she works very hard, she puts in a lot of, uh, I'm guessing a lot of extra time. Uh, yeah, so, so we can't say anything negative, uh, but again, that's our perception. Uh, she doesn't have specific goals or, or, uh, uh, things that we can measure as far as telling us this is what she's doing, this is, this is showing the, uh, uh, the reasons and, and, uh, why it makes sense for her to receive this increase. Uh, I'm not against her receiving the increase. I'm not against any of our employees receiving an increase. I just think that we should be doing it in, in a different way. Uh, and I, I think our communication manager shows proof of point that if we have, uh, solid evaluations, solid goals for our staff, that then they are receiving raises that they deserve, and that may be more than two and a half percent, uh, which, you know, if, if it's there, if they're going to job, if they're achieving a goal, if they're making our city better, they're, you know, through their work, they're saving the city money, they're managing, you know, they're looking for initiatives to help our city as opposed to just, you know, being perceived as doing a, a good job. Uh, that's what I'd like to see, and that's what I ask for every year. Uh, so I will be voting no. Uh, again, I'm not against raises, I'm just against the process that we're currently in.
I think those are valid, very valid points, and I agree, I will vote for this because it's the system we have, but we have talked extensively about the fact that we would like to see more done from the standpoint of incentive-based raises. Even if it's not a performance-based raise, it, it can be designed in a way to have an incentive to lift people up to a, to a higher standard.
I would agree, we need one of the goal-oriented programs to follow through the ratings. We talked, we talked about this.
That's where we're at. Couple of observations if I may, and I'll, really quick, because I wanted to insist that, uh, I do want everybody to know that we do performance evaluations, uh, on an annual basis, uh, and we have been doing that. And, and so we're not totally in the blind, just saying everybody should get a raise. Uh, and, and included in those are, you know, observations relative to areas that need improvement, et cetera. Um, so I want you to feel at least comfortable in that regard. Uh, the, there, these include this two hundred and fifty dollar equity increase that was included in the police and fire contracts. Uh, there was discussion, it was not included in the service department contract. Um, and for what reason, it's kind of hard to put your finger on, they were asked to endorse a contract, uh, and the others that already granted those, and, uh, I don't sit in those negotiations, so it's not clear to me if they bargained for something else or if someone forgot to ask, don't know the answer to that. Uh, we, uh, the issue of parity is always really important, and, um, uh, well, we could say, well, why don't we, why don't we give them a two hundred and fifty dollar equity increase? Well, then, unions, I love unions, and I was a strong union guy all the way back to Firestone Tuck, local set. Uh, and as a general rule, uh, if we were to do something like that at this point in time, uh, I'd be disappointed if the other two unions didn't say, hey, wait a minute, they're now out of nowhere, they're getting something extra, we should get something extra too. Uh, so there's that. I want council to know that, uh, while it's, there is sensitivity to that, and I had a conference, I had a conversation, a meeting with the union representative for the service department, and I explained to him in detail where we were and what was going on, and, and, um, I, I will tell you that my perception, and certainly feel free to talk with him, was that he was comfortable, he understood. Uh, he understood what happened, and he understood why we wouldn't, why it would be impractical for us to do something now to try to catch them up. So there's that. And the final thing, I'm open to all this discussion as we go forward each year. Um, you know, parity is a tough deal. Uh, you know, there's a reason that all of them got two and a half percent, uh, the three unions, and they pay attention to what everybody else is getting. Uh, and so on one hand, uh, I've, I've always, it made sense to me, to the, to the non-union people, and particularly administrative staff, uh, here, fire, service department, you know, they don't unionize, a lot of cities do, uh, maybe most, I don't know the answer to that. But they haven't unionized, so there's one argument, it said, well, if the union guys are all getting two and a half percent, you ought to give the non-union people two and a half percent, uh, because if they organize, they'd get their two and a half percent. Uh, the flip side of that is, when you start going above two and a half percent for the non-union, the next time you sit at the table with the union guys, they're going to say, what about this? You know, how did you give these people four, five, six percent? So, um, probably, given the length of this meeting, it would have been a good idea for me to not to open all of this up, but I just want you to know, all of that is percolating up here, and we're trying to be sensitive to it, uh, and trying to be responsive to it. We'll, we'll continue to try to be better in that regard. I just have to say one thing to that last point, if it's not across the board, does not blanket, then it's not fair. It's, so, so that, that example you gave of, well, if you give, if you give somebody a specific raise, as we did for excellent performance, that's different. So if you're looking at people individually instead of blanket, there's not, there's not comparison.
You're not talking about that.
All right. Anything else? Good discussion, I appreciate it. I think.
Will we be asking for a vote tonight?
I believe we will be asking for a vote tonight.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we will now close the finance committee meeting at seven twenty-four. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next resolution is resolution twenty-three R one oh one.
All right. Yep, we will open community development at, hopefully, after Jim closed his, at seven twenty-five. Um, resolution twenty-three R one oh one, resolution authorizing continuation of the terms of the addendum to the New Franklin's agreement with Insight Advisory Group LLC serving as planning consultants for New Franklin and declaring this emergency. And I know we have, we have some concern, and we're going to want some time on this, and I know that Mr. Powell has some questions.
Yeah, I want to bring up a few things on this. So, just to make sure I'm reading, sorry, is this a renewal of the entire Insight contract? Because I, I was under the impression that the existing one expires at the end of this year.
This would be a renewal of the addendum which, uh,
Because if you.
The addendum called into, I mean, the addendum extended the original contract, so.
Okay, because the original contract was just with Insight solely.
Correct.
And that was a twenty-two, twenty-three year contract.
Right.
And this is going to extend that contract and the agreement with Credo?
Right, well, we did an addendum to that contract, that twenty-five hundred dollars, uh, back in, uh, when did we say we did that?
August second.
Yeah, so, because it was presented to us, the opportunity to, um, retain the services of the lobbyists, uh, and that's Brian Durtel and his team. Um, and, uh, they quoted us a, a, a fee of five thousand a month, which I talked to some other lobbyists, and they wanted five thousand dollars a month. Uh, there was a relationship between Insight and Credo, which is Brian Durtel, uh, and that's how they were brought to my attention. Uh, and, uh, so I suggested, I, I told them I didn't really feel that we could bear that much of additional expense, but if they could combine forces, if Credo could subcontract with, um, uh, with Insight, then we would consider five thousand a month, and that's what was presented to you in August.
So, if I remember, back in May, we used them for, to, to approach a certain item.
Yes.
And then in August, August second meeting, we actually had this discussion, and we didn't know if we, a lobbyist could really fit with us for what we're trying to do. And we agreed to go to, to pass that legislation then, kind of run them on a trial period, we were going to reevaluate what we got for our money that period of time. Uh, we haven't seen anything as to what we've got for our money in that period of time. And the resolution coming in front of us is just assuming we're going to take on Credo without giving us any feedback as to what we've gotten for their services since August.
Well, we're not taking, we're not taking on Credo, Insight took on Credo, but we're going to continue that relationship of five thousand dollars. And here's, and let me try to answer you a question. We are right in the middle of the money chase. Uh, we are, we're trying to come up with a funding gap of twelve point three million dollars on the sewer project to make sure that we get the sewer up here to ninety-three. Uh, we have businesses waiting to make significant investments on ninety-three, that are going to create a, a, a significant number of jobs. They're not going to do it without the sewer. So it's really a critical process for us to come up with this funding gap of this twelve point three million dollars. Um, when we engaged Credo initially, there was a thought that the, out of the state, uh, out of the state budget that was being adopted at that time, that funding was going to be available. We engaged Credo, and we went out for some salt trucks and a couple hundred, a couple million dollars, I think, for the, uh, service department. And then, as you know, they changed, uh, procedure in Columbus, and that seven hundred million dollars that was going to be available this year, they pushed into the next capital budget. So in addition to the capital budget, the funds that are available in the capital budget for twenty, for next year, they, there's an additional seven hundred million dollars. So we've made extensive lobbying efforts on our own to try to put ourselves in a position to come up with this twelve point three million. In fact, we really are trying to get thirty-five million because we want to get to the next phase two, and we're working on that. So, um, so we're, we're right in the middle of that process. I suggested this as a month-to-month. Um, and quite frankly, I think that those folks know where they are, uh, between Insight and, and, uh, Credo, that, um, we're going to need to see the result, but we're not going to know the answer to this probably until about April, when they approve that, when they finally approve the budget. So currently, we have, uh, and I, I will tell you that, um, uh, I've been, I've had, I've looked at this with a careful eye. Uh, we've done some lobbying on our own. I've inquired whether or not it's a pro or a con. I've seen the relationship that Brian Durtel has with the same people that we've been talking to. Um, I know the relationship he has, I've seen it, with the people that are going to make the decisions, some of whom may even be sitting at the table, uh, hopefully. decisions, some of whom may even be sitting at the table, hopefully, that are gonna make the decisions on that budget. So I hate to cut that off at this point in time. I have no hesitancy to tell you that come June, more than happy to take another look and say, "Hey, listen," because if it doesn't work, then we're, then we'll go in a different direction. But I don't, I think it would be, I think it would be harmful to us to change the players right at this point in time. When I say that we're in the middle of it, I mean, we went down, you know, in the summertime and talked to the Ohio Department of Development, and that's a whole separate fund in addition to the $700 million. And that's a wastewater infrastructure grant. So those people, Lydia Mahalik, who's the director of the Ohio Department of Development, I know that she has a good relationship, good working relationship with Brian Durrell and also with Sean Joyce. She was in their offices two months ago, and she's the head of the department, and she knows that they're working for us. And the same thing is true. We don't, right now, we don't have a state representative, but Bill Romer has been interested and is helpful to us. Senator Christina Rovner, this is her district. We met with her, I met personally with her, got an excellent relationship with her. She knows these folks, and I got an email either yesterday, it might have been today, that Brian Durrell was setting up a meeting for Christina Rovner to come here. And I'll give you guys a heads up, anybody that wants to join us sometime early in January to hear a further pitch. So it would be risky, in my opinion, to change horses at this point in time. If we pull these guys off the team, I don't know what that says. And I'm not afraid to lobby myself, but that's really where I'm coming from on this. That's why it's a month-to-month, there's no increase in the rate, and we'll keep it in place. Another, you know, probably, I guess, by June, we'll know.
So I guess one of my next concerns would be, so this way it sits in front of us is there's no option to go with just Insight versus Insight-Credo, because it's not called out in here that there's a separate...
If you folks tell me you don't want Credo, I'm gonna have to talk to Insight.
If you're saying we could terminate them in April, or let's just say, there's nothing in here that gives us that option to go separate from the group.
We'd have to just, we'd do another agreement. So if somehow Credo's gone and we want to keep Insight, we'll put together an agreement. You know, we asked Insight if they want to continue, so I think they would. We need a new agreement.
So in your experience with lobbying, do you see a greater return on investment when you do have a partner like this?
Well, this is new for us. We have never done this. I know that it's done, and we're asking a big ask that's, I guess I could jump to this as part of my report, but the Greater Akron Chamber does some screening on what projects they're going to recommend for this capital grant. And we have the assistance of council. Mr. Daniels was involved in the process of putting the package together. Credo, they were, Brian Durrell was involved, and Sean Joyce was involved. We made our presentation down there to the Greater Akron Chamber. We were advised there's probably gonna be, from that capital grant, they think there'll be $30 or $35 million that'll come into some account. There were 31 different requests for funding from the, to the chamber, asking for a total of $150 million. The chamber recommended 12 projects for a total amount of $35 million, which would come to a little bit under $3 million for each project, and ours was one of the 12 that they're recommending, and they recommended $4 million for our project. So did that happen because, like, "I'm really good at this"? Of course, that's the answer. Or is it because we had a team, you know? And there was a lot of input, and a lot of heads working on that, how we made this presentation. So Mark, you know, it's a little too early to tell. Hey, the proof will be in the pudding. So we'll know by June. And then, Mr. Powell, then I'm really open, you know, as we go forward with this, you know, it's, if we weren't in the middle of this, we probably haven't summed that conversation right now, because there's a lot of different options. Do we try to bring it in-house? Does that make sense, the whole development end? But that, we'll have to have that discussion, I think, later this year, later next year.
So yeah, that was kind of some of my main questions. How much does this give us above and beyond our, because we've got great relationships with Senator Rovner, we've got a lifeline to Senator Vance, and we've got Mrs. Sykes, and we've got potentially somebody here that may be, we've got good relationships, and how much more of an edge will this give us, and is it worth the cost?
I've had that conversation with some of the people on the other end, and I won't name anybody, but the reps, the state reps themselves. And I've been, it's been affirmed for me that it's helpful, that those folks are talking to these people every day. We need support not just from Representative Rovner, we need support from a number of different, you know, from the party heads, and the budget chiefs and so on, so they cast a little wider net. I'm torn on that, quite frankly, Mr. Powell, because we've been off to a good start on it, but it just felt, you know, we're chasing $300,000, that's one thing, but we're chasing $35 million, that's something else, you know? So let's get a few more horses in the water.
Do you feel that by April, we have a good feel whether this is worth it or not? We can revisit it and...
I said April earlier, I'm gonna say June, because I don't think the final decision, my understanding is that the final decisions are gonna be made relative to the budget sometime in that timeframe. It will be announced then, I don't know. And that's one pot. But then we also have the Ohio Department of Development and their water, wastewater infrastructure grant, you know, there's probably other cities going after the money for there as well. And I don't know that we'll know the answer on that one until we get, you know, closer to summertime. So I think June would be a good for our...
Mayor?
Can I go first?
Sure.
So I've learned a lot about lobbyists in the last, what is it, three months now, two, three months? And they do, you know, they get a bad name. They get a bad name like lawyers get bad names. They do provide an interesting service, though, and I've talked to a lot of reps all over the state in my journey. Seems like maybe I should hire lobbyists. The basic job, as seen by legislators of lobbyists, is to educate them, and it's talked about pretty regularly amongst other legislators, that a good legislator will give you the goods and the bads, and will just really help educate you on both sides and answer you honestly. Would we be restricted to only them? Let's say we get into this process, the application deadline was yesterday, right? I think for the $700 million. Could we bring anybody else in on our team on a part-time basis while we're under this?
Sure.
Okay. Because I can see where there, this is a big ask, especially for a meeting like this, and it makes sense in a lot of ways. I guess that's my, I like the fact that it's month-to-month, that we're not locking ourselves in. The development part, I, that part I'm a little confused on because we don't have the means for that development, so spending the money on a development company, you know, that's a tough one for us, and we've lost more in the last couple months than we've gained. So I don't, and do we need to pass this tonight? How important is this? Can we get one more reading on it to kind of think it through and maybe? Sure, because that takes us to January 3rd, so sure. Yeah, I mean, we're gonna, you know, we're gonna need the authority to continue to pay them. So, you know, if we, if it doesn't pass the 3rd, then I, we're not gonna have the benefit of their services in the month of January.
I doubt much has happened over Christmas.
Right, I agree. There's no state house session until January 15th, and only one in January, so everybody's okay with asking time, and go ahead.
I, thank you for letting me speak. I respect asking for time, and if anybody, if any one person asks for time, I totally support it. I think in this case, and my personal feeling is I'm comfortable moving forward with it tonight, so that they know we're comfortable with that moving forward, and there's no question in here. We've talked many times about different things, and we've always thought about having professionals helping us out, looking out, who can, consultants or whoever to help us out, because we don't know everything. Well, I...
Mr. Smith, yes.
But this is something that we've always talked about in all different departments within the city, and I think this is something that we need that help from, even though we do have those good relationships with the people in power throughout the community, the senators and representatives. It is still important that we have a professional that knows what to say, where to say, when to say, et cetera. Mr. Mayor has mentioned numerous times going through this process over the last year or so, where he's gone down the claws, and he swerves so much from his trips down and the people that he's spoken with, and light bulbs have gone off, and that just, you know, that's where we need this professional service that already knows those things, that already has those light bulbs lit. And, you know, do we know if they've done any good for us? Now, we don't know right now, and that's, you know, but that's the way government works, is we, you know, it takes time for us to figure these things out. I think, based on what we're being told, I think it makes sense to continue with them at this point. I agree, I think it's fabulous that it's a month-to-month thing for us, so if at some point we're like, "Whoa, wait a minute." But the investment that we're making in this group, based on the possible returns that we could get because of their help, I think it makes total sense that we make this investment. Again, if you want a daytime, I support you 100% on that. I just don't know if that's necessary at this point. So that's my thoughts, and I'm torn.
I am, too. But I kind of agree, and me with what you said. You said, you made the comment just now, you learned so much about it, and they do have their place.
Oh, absolutely.
They are needed commodities, which we don't have, and they're going to use them. So I would go along with whatever you guys want to do. If you want to take time, it's fine. I'm ready to vote tonight if you want, but if you don't, it's fine with me.
Yeah, I don't know, we're a few weeks from making a difference. I mean, I'd like to be involved in it, and make a vote on it tonight if possible, but your call.
I can go along and vote for tonight, but I would like to just say that in June, I would bring it back up, reevaluate, and make a determination whether we keep it or not.
We can actually bring it up every month, Ben, and discuss it, and see what's going on. I don't think that would be, I think that would be prudent of us to want, to see what's going on a month-to-month. Would you agree with that, Paul?
Yes.
And I don't think that is asking too much, honey. I applaud you for what you do.
All right.
I appreciate you.
Having said that, I guess we can go to vote. I'm okay with that. And that's it for community development. Anybody have any other comments, questions, concerns? We are making this the longest meeting possible for Dave's time. So everybody know that. We're doing this on purpose. All right, I will close community development at 7:44. I do appreciate it.
Second reading ordinance number 23003. Mr. Webb?
7:44, opening up the Law and Ordinance Committee for a second reading of ordinance number 23003, and ordinance to amend Articles 4, 5, 6, 7, 11, and 14 of the New Franklin Zoning Code. I thought tonight was a good meeting and was very productive, but it seems like we still have a few things to work out yet, so I would open it up for the conversation.
I think it was great. I think it was nice to see so much of the community. I think the majority of the community that's here was here because of that. I think it's a great testament to who we are, the community, the people who are being involved. That was just for my last meeting. I think that's it.
I agree with you, David.
Well, I guess if it's all right, then I'll, yes, for more time, if there's more comments, so. All righty, it is, wow, still 7:45, and we're closing the law ordinance with a thousand.
That was the quickest one. Thank you. I would like to call the ordinance in the city of New Franklin Wednesday, December 23rd, 7:45, the room will rise for 10 minutes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Ms. Kelly, Speaker, Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Hargit?
Present.
Mrs. Jones?
Present.
Mr. Daniels?
Here.
Mr. Powell?
Present.
Mr. Webb?
Here.
Mr. Stock?
Here.
And I realize I've been remiss throughout this whole evening, Mrs. Cook has been ill this week.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and she's still, so she has been coming when nobody's around tonight, so she's working from home the last day or so, and I don't know if we'll see her this week. That's why she's not here tonight.
Okay, thank you.
Hope she feels better.
I hope she does, too. This cold that's going around really is lasting. I'll make the motion to approve the minutes in the regular scheduled meeting. That was easy for me to say. December 6th. Do we have a first and a second, Ms. Kelly?
Jack, did you have a second?
I did.
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes. And I'll make the motion to approve the financials for November 2023, subject to audit.
Second.
Do we have a first and a second, Kelly?
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Motion passes. Is there any public comment, any questions concerned, anything you'd like to bring up at this point? This year.
This is the end, all right, or do I have to stand up?
No, you're fine. Just speak up.
I was just curious as to what area the 4550 residences that come to and have near that service?
Pretty much southwest quadrant. Yeah. There's some that are north, there's a couple that are more northwest, but most are, and those sporadic couple, neither, you know, not too far from here, but the majority of them are out there, rural road in that area.
I'm not too far away, but where we live, farm hunting, but I have a lot of reception. I mean, and always have, I try almost every different type of plant.
And I live by you, and I never had any problem at all, but not very far from us there from the bad.
And I'm not saying that, I do have it, but you know, sometimes it's not, I can't get on the internet. You have days that you just can't get in. That's for sure. Okay. First reading, Resolution Number 23R 99. Ms. Kelly?
A resolution in support of Ohio GIG LLC's application to the Ohio Residential Broadband Expansion Grant for funding for extension of broadband to New Franklin residents and declaring an emergency.
This resolution was assigned to the Utilities Committee. I'd like to make a motion to waive the three.
Second.
Do we have a first and a second, Kelly?
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 23R 99.
Second.
Do we have a first and a second, Kelly?
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
We move to waive the three readings on resolution 23R100.
Second. Do we have a first and a second, Kelly? Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution number 23R101.
A resolution authorizing continuation of the terms of the addendum to New Franklin's agreement with Insight Advisory Group LLC, serving as planning consultant for New Franklin and declaring an emergency.
This resolution was assigned to the Community Development Committee and I'd ask to make a motion to waive the three readings. Second.
Do we have a first and a second? Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Make a motion to adopt resolution 23R101. Second.
Do we have a first and a second, Kelly? Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes. Resolution number 23R101.
A resolution authorizing New Franklin to renew the agreement with Axon Enterprises Incorporated for body camera recording and storage equipment for the New Franklin Police Department and declaring that this resolution shall be effective immediately upon passage.
This resolution is assigned to the Finance Committee. We move to waive the three readings on resolution 23R100.
Second. Do we have a first and a second, Kelly? Mr. Cox?
No.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Motion passes. And all our favorite times, we have the mayor's report.
Time will tell. I'll try to go quick. We got, it's been a long night. But it's been a good night. A good discussion, and it's appreciated. It's important to the people and you guys do a fabulous, and you ladies and gentlemen do a good job at that. All right, we had a couple things you'll be happy to hear, we already covered. I have a, one more board that we need to fill, positions on, and then it's the Board of Tax Review. And we haven't talked about this for a while. This is, as part of our, our tax code, Section 18 creates a Board of Tax Review that to hear appeals on assessments. It hasn't been a real busy board, in six years we've had one. Not to say now, you know, knock on wood, we'll have six next week. And, but it came to my attention that we didn't have all these seats filled. We filled them a couple of years ago. So what's required in the, in the tax code, a three-member board, the mayor appoints one person and that person sits until he's replaced. And so Robert Keith has been on that board, served on that board, and has agreed to continue to serve as the mayor's appointee on that board. We did post on the website for interest in this. We have two people, first of all, that I'm recommending, this will be council's appointments to this board. First would be Terry Proces, who, we met with Terry, she submitted an application and has experience in the business world, in the public sector as well, and has agreed to serve. These would be two-year terms, commencing January 1st of '24 through December 31st of '25. And the second is Donald McCabe, lives out on West Nimasilla, retired from BMW as an engineer, had management experience, had a lot of contract experience, and is well-qualified to sit as well. So I would ask the council to move to, under our own, to appoint Terry Proces and Donald McCabe to those two seats on the Board of Tax Review.
Can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
Is Terry still on the planning zone?
No, she rolled off the planning zone, so that term expired. And we haven't filled that yet, we've advertised for that, so we're gonna still need to fill that element spot.
So we need a motion?
We need a motion.
Salute.
Second. Do we have a first and a second, Kelly? Did you understand what the motion was? It's a motion to appoint Terry?
Right, I do that, but who made, who made the motion?
David. David and I seconded it.
Thank you. Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Hargit?
Yes.
Mrs. Jones?
Yes.
Mr. Daniels?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Stock?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Excellent. The final, we have that ordinance to fill on planning zoning. We also are going to need to, I will need to come to you on the third with recommendations for the Charter Review Commission. And we did post that one as well, October 31st, and we closed the applications just to have a closing date of December 1st. It didn't rein in a lot of applications. We have three right now. Mr. Stock submitted his application. Lynn Clark, who was on one of the previous commissions, submitted hers. A wonderful lady, Carol Adamson, submitted hers as well. She was elected to the first Charter Review Commission and she sat on two out of the other three, so she's willing to serve again. So I am in the recruitment stage at this point in time. If somebody wants to recommend somebody, please do that. If you have further thoughts. A number of people who have served before aren't available anymore. Joe Parsons did a great job with it and unfortunately a couple people actually passed over the years. Ken Tomlin isn't there anymore. So I will put together that group, I'll try to get you some names in advance of that meeting, but we will need to, that has to be done by January 14th. I'll let you, I'll let you, a total of seven. So that's gonna need to be approved at our next meeting. All right. And let me see, the other two things to discuss.
Mr. Webb, like, what?
Oh, yeah, I was gonna say, all right, all right. Now, that's ninety seconds here, so it's all like, I'm supposed to be sneezing down there. I mean, very much, that's beautiful, beautiful. All right, I told you, Mark, we're gonna let you go. All right, thanks. Well, this is, the fun part of what we do here is our holiday nights contest, and we have, and this is assorted by our police officers. And Mr. Powell, you were doing something with this, I don't know if you had a separate list or it didn't?
I got forward, sorry, I put out something, because a lot of people had decorated their homes and for some reason they weren't considered or, who knows what happened there. But I just put out a, they say solicited names. I put together a list and I forwarded that to the police to add to the, any of the ones that they had found.
Well, I will tell you, what was the last thing you said?
They added my list to their list.
Oh, okay, all right. There were, this was tough competition, and there were some, I know there's some really neat houses, like one right down the street, but that's not on the list. But we had, I'm gonna give you the top 11 because there was a tie for like the last four spots. The Morris Residence on Sylvania Drive, we got a really handy-dandy, Katie put together a map.
Wonderful.
And so we're gonna post this. And we'll post these winners on the website, so if people not only want to come by and see them, there's a little route for you to follow.
Thanks.
So the Morris Residence.
I'll post that on Facebook.
Yeah, yeah, we'll have her put that on there.
It's already there.
Oh, is it already there? See how efficient we are? It's amazing. All right, the Morris Residence on Sylvania was number one, tied for second, the Layer Residence on Manchester Road, and the Benner Residence on Dillon. And then there was a tie for third, there was a three-way tie, Brennan's Residence on Bullander, the Schultz Residence on West Nimasilla, and the Efall Residence on Woodcrest. Next in line was the Boggs Residence on Pearlman. And then the final four spots, all with four votes, Barca on Dunning Road, Mazagati on South Main, Kane on Stump, and Tool on Vanderhook. So we'll send out proclamations for them as well, certificates for them, and you have your own map, so take a drive and see the lights. And you'll see a whole lot of other pretty ones when you're on your way to these.
I think this was the nicest year I've ever seen you all.
I think so too.
Do you agree?
I think so too.
Everywhere you looked, it's very particular.
Yeah, I wondered about that.
One house just south of Nimasilla, if you hadn't seen it, you'd go by, they got a really nice display, they got skeletons out there, like a choir.
Yeah.
It's really cool.
Yeah. Well, it's all well done. All right, we already talked about the chamber boards. Oh, well, I guess the last thing I'll say is reminding council, our Christmas lunch will be right here, 11 o'clock on Friday. We make it 11 because that's the lunch hour for those guys that are doing the 73 shift. And please join us if you're able.
Oh, yeah.
And that's all I got.
Wow. And I assume you know financial report, because you reached it some days. I'll do for a buzz tomorrow.
Okay.
Do we have any old business?
I'd just like to say thanks to the mayor for doing the proclamation for the centenary, and that's something I'd like to see us keep going with that, I think that's something special for them.
And I should have mentioned that Mr. Powell was wanting to draw our attention to that, and gave us a heads up and did a follow-through on that, so, well, not appreciated.
I just think it's a good idea to keep it up, I really do. Any other old business? Any new business?
No, I, I'd just like to say real quick, I know, probably gonna be more said, but I'd just like to commend the three council members who are not gonna be here the next week, and thank them for their service. And I can say as a member of this board that it's good that we've got a relationship where we can disagree, agree, but in every case, have a good discussion and air our thoughts. It's been nice working with you folks.
Thanks, yeah, appreciate it.
Thank you.
You do that, I'm doing the same thing. I think we've grown some, some pretty good relationships up here. I think we may have had some misunderstandings, but I think we've all come out of it better for it, friends.
I agree. And I think this is the best council I've ever sat on, I've really enjoyed it. It's been amazing. All of you gentlemen are a pleasure to work with.
Am I on? Is there more business? Or you got more public comment?
Public.
Yeah, I'll go after that then, because we want to do this at the very end. I'll finish. We might be here another hour or two.
Do you have any questions or concerns from the public? Anything you'd like to talk about? No? I'm glad to tell you, our next meeting will be January 3rd at 6:00 p.m. And I measure over to the neighbors and people special.
Yeah, great, great. Well, I mean, this is, and a couple comments already made, and this is truly an honor to make some presentations. We're gonna start with Mark Webb. Wow, Mark. Oh, you talk about stepping into the breach. Mr. Fetterman moved out of the area. We needed representation from Ward 4. The few people, several people stepped up. Council, I think, did a fabulous job on the interview, a very, very tough choice, they indicated Ben, but I think they need the right choice. And Mark Webb, I didn't know Mark at the time. He came in, he made sure that he was informed, he asked the right questions. I thought you did a fabulous job on the board in terms of bringing up issues that you had, but understanding that it's a teamwork concept. And then on top of that, he went above and beyond, jumped in the vote with us. Yeah. And we finished second. But you know what, I told Mark today, you know, he sent something to say that we appreciate, and I said, well, I just, I hope this was the first of, the beginning of, Mark Webb's involvement with the city. And thanks, Mr. Cox, for giving that shh, shh. So you're not getting out of anything, no, you're gonna be right back.
No, we're happy.
But this is presented to Mark Webb in grateful appreciation of your service, New Franklin City Council 2020.
Thank you so much, yeah. We just want to thank you for the great group of individuals to work with, and it's been an honor, and you guys all put me under your wing, because being a rookie, I could have flubbed up more than I did. So it was a real honor, and I feel like this community's got such a great group of leaders here that it's been a pleasure to work with you guys.
All right.
Sorry. I was trying to.
All right. Thanks for that. Well, next, I'm going in order of service up here, but if I was going in order of service to the city of New Franklin, I'd probably go in the other order. But Terry Hargit, would you come on up, please? Terry has served here on council for 12 years. Prior to that, he served, nobody knows exactly how many years in the fire department. I believe it was 10 years of full-time, if I'm not mistaken. And it goes all the way back into the 80s for Terry as a volunteer and then a part-time firefighter, paramedic. So just the book time is a total of 22 years of service between full-time fire and then council as well, representing Ward 2. In the interim, he served this community over at Chase Bank, and so many people know that, and so many people got such great advice from Terry. And one of the gentlemen made that comment to me today about how bright this guy is and how personable and how knowledgeable and how sharp that Terry has been in his service to the community. The Hargit family is one of the cornerstones of this community. Sue, kids, Glenn is on our police force now, and you've made a difference in the place that you chose to call home, a big difference. And your contribution here on the board has been so much appreciated. Again, an individual who's been a team member, but spoke up individually when he thought it was appropriate, but always, 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 what I saw you do, Terry, was make the best decisions you could in the best interest of the people. So presented to Terry Hargit in appreciation of twelve years of dedicated service to the city of New Franklin, council member Ward Two. Congratulations. Thank you. You want to say you're one too, or?
I like being here.
All right. Thank you. All right. All right. Okay, ladies, get up here. I don't even know if we knew each other. This guy, his service to the city, he's older than the city. Yeah, I mean, you started here as a village council member, but yeah, yeah, David came on board in January of two thousand and five, which is unbelievable, it was almost nine years ago now, nineteen, nineteen years ago now. So that's when David came on board and served as at the village council member, and then when we became the city, he followed on city council, representing Ward Three for nine of those years, I believe. How many years did he serve as council president? Yeah, about nine years, and so he gets a gavel on his. And, you know, he did a fabulous job in that capacity with the gavel. You know, what can I think of to say nice things about it? That's not like that. What David brought was, you know, they talk about literature, that every man, the every man, okay? Somebody that could relate to a lot of different people, and that's what I saw in you, and that's what you did. And you spoke for the every man out here in the city of New Franklin. As has been pointed out, there's been times, you know, there were disagreements, but I never saw you disagreeable. I believe you always were well-prepared, you always had a good reason for whatever your opinions were, you were willing to speak your mind, which is an important deal, not just sit there and grumble and complain about it out in the hallway, but to say it in here, where people had a chance to react to it. So you've been a man of your word that way, and I think your representation, not just, you know, for Ward Three, but for the entire city, and particularly in your years when you had the gavel, it was exemplary. And I should say this, too, we got family members here, too. You know, we're congratulating these folks. Families making sacrifice for the work that these men and women do up here and the time that they spend. And so, you know, part of this congratulation goes out to you family members as well.